Right on, right on, right on. We got a good turnout, guys. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad.
Usually I charge money for my fifteen dollars.
Yeah? All these people are guests ready. That's good, that's awesome. Chambers.
Thank you, Mayor Christie. So before council tonight is bylaw forty-six point eight and we are presenting it with some amendments. The amendments are largely driven by two things. One is that the Locom County was invited to have a councillor sit on the Rec and Culture Board in 2010. That invitation was extended to them relative to the funding that the county has been presenting, providing to the city for facilities. Historically, the county has provided operational subsidies and in recent years they have begun to provide capital subsidies for our facilities. And so in order to accommodate a county councillor to sit on the Rec and Culture Board, we needed to amend the bylaw. And so we are proposing that. While we are looking at the bylaw, we have also taken this opportunity to go in and perform some general housekeeping, which is changing the word town to city, readjusting titles and sort of reflecting, changing anything that doesn't reflect current practices. The county has appointed Reeve Ken Wiegmore to be the primary councillor to sit on the Rec and Culture Board and Paula Law will be his alternate. Administration feels that this is a good thing to be supporting. It certainly will enhance the exchange of information and provide opportunity for solid communication around the use of the facilities relative to county rate barriers. And so we are asking that council consider providing three readings to bylaw forty-six point eight as amended.
Thank you. Councillor Bousma?
We have a couple of alternatives, all three alternatives in front of us this evening. And I would like to just clarify, is the county council open to increasing it to nine members to include both the county representative and the county councillor?
Sorry, councillor Bousma, did you?
Well, in your, in the information that we have available to us, it does indicate we have three alternatives. Okay? And how open is, like, I would like to suggest that we go to nine members. But is the county anticipating that they're going to just replace their current county representative with a county councillor?
No, thanks for that clarification. It's the intention that the county representative will remain and the county councillor will be the additional position.
Then I will make a motion if I may to give first reading to bylaw forty-six point eight as presented.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? So period. Second and third reading this evening? Councillor Kite?
I'll note that we have second reading for bylaw forty-six point eight.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Harry? Councillor Creasy?
Thanks, Mayor Christie. You were expecting me to put forth a third reading and I just have a bit of a problem with doing all three of these in one evening. I don't think that anybody in the rec board certainly does not have a problem with inviting another member to it, especially one that contributes greatly to facilities here in Locom. However, doing this all in one evening, I don't believe is proper protocol. So I will not be supporting the third reading and suggest that we hold that over until our next meeting.
Thank you. And seeing that we need to be unanimous to go to final reading, then we will carry that over. Thank you, councillor Creasy.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, councillor Foster.
In respect to these situations, could I get clarification from Nora or Stu as to when we do these types of things? Because I thought we had it pretty straightforward that we could do these types of things in a very straightforward manner. Where are the situations that this is something that cannot correct?
Nora?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. To councillor Foster. I presume you're asking the question, when can we give three readings in one evening? Certainly councillor Foster, that's council's prerogative and that could be done on any bylaw matter, providing councils comfortable with passing three readings in one evening.
All right. Sorry, councillor Rappel?
I know this discussion has come up a number of times about doing the three readings in one meeting. And is it maybe wiser if we just wait for that third reading for another meeting for every one reason? Because it's going to come up every single time that someone doesn't want to have the third reading done in a same meeting. We might as well just have it scheduled for the next one.
To councillor Rappel, certainly you're correct in that there's value in pulling third reading over to a following meeting and that it does give the public time to review the bylaw and provide input should they be necessary. So we can certainly institute or introduce that practice where we don't recommend three readings in one evening. And previously I was remiss in not saying that. Certainly bylaws that require advertising and public hearings cannot be given three readings in one meeting.
Any further discussion on that? Thank you. We will move forward to land use planning, land development, residential land development, legacy point update. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. Administration is asking council this evening for direction on the Legacy Point Phase One project. And I'd like to start by giving a brief background on this particular project. It was introduced in '07 and certainly it was in response to rising housing prices. It was, at that time, considered prices were becoming unaffordable and were escalating very quickly. The other aspect of this project was that it was an attempt to create a community that was, certainly offered diversity in the way of housing product. It offered a walkable community. So it was creating something that was deemed to be difference and something that was deemed to be affordable for the community. There were a number of different iterations in terms of this project. Certainly, the original intent was to create a first-time homeowners program. And that was introduced in 2008. Thereafter, certainly we experienced economic changes and there was an introduction of an airpark as phase one of the project. So as I mentioned, the iterations did change over time with the changes to the economy. The project didn't come back before council until February of 2011. There was a two-year period from February '09 when the contractual agreement was signed with Canadian University College. And February '11, this particular item was not before council. When it did come back before council, February 11, there was an undertaking to determine what the city's responsibility was in carrying out this project. It was deemed that the city did have a responsibility to carry out Phase One of the Legacy Point project, a legal obligation to do so. So after that finding, there were several in-camera sessions between administration and council. And I'll certainly state at this time that in accordance with legislation, in accordance with the Municipal Government Act and FOIP, certainly, council has every ability to discuss land matters in camera. Council directed the administration, after several meetings with CUC, to proceed with the development of a 15-acre site. And that site was north of Henner's Landing and east, or I'm sorry, west of CNE Trail. So the administration continued negotiations with CUC on the development of that site. And today we have an amending agreement that's been drafted, however, that agreement remains unsigned. In terms of financial implications, to date in 2011, council has authorized the administration to expend up to $70,000. And of course, that's on engineering services, outline plan development, and subdivision. And council also approved an amount of $4,293,900 in the 2012 capital budget to undertake servicing of Legacy Point Phase One. At this time, the administration has given council several options or alternatives in terms of how to proceed. The recommendation that was put forward by administration was to proceed with the project and undertake the outstanding tasks. And there are several outstanding tasks. Certainly, everything from subdivision to site servicing and developing an outline plan. And then moving into areas of determining if the first-time homeowners program would continue to exist, looking at architectural controls, and also lot pricing. The part of that recommendation did endorse that the sale and administration of lots be contracted out. So that was a portion of the project that was recommended to be contracted out to private enterprise. The other alternatives before you certainly give council the opportunity to terminate the project should they see fit. And I think I'll leave it at that for council discussion. Thank you.
Councillor? Councillor Rappel?
I'll let that council terminate the city's participation in the ready project and serve notice to CUC of this decision.
Discussion, councillor Bousma?
Relative to that, I do have a few comments I'd like to make. The concerns in my letter to Locom Globe Editor published September 18, 2007, are still valid. Over and above that, I'm still not in favor of proceeding with this project for the following reasons. I do not believe the city has the necessary administrative expertise to develop residential land at this time. I'm against using industrial land reserve monies plus debentures for financing this project, nor putting our taxpayers' monies at this level of risk. With the great possibility of cost overruns due to weather and on-site conditions and with the expected cost per acre of land, I expect there would be minimal flexibility within the funding to maintain a marketable product or prevent a loss. I believe there already has been a dramatic effect on the development of land in our community over the last few years due to this initiative, even considering economic conditions. But I do fully understand the need for this council to live in reality in this present time. We have been given this situation from a previous council. How can we proceed at this juncture considering what we have to work with and minimize the potential negative impact to our citizens in our city image? Therefore, if it is ultimately the will of council to actually proceed with this project, based on the understanding of our legal obligations under the original agreement, I would like to see the following information before vote can actually proceed. Number one, subdivision plan showing lots, recreation space, municipal reserves, et cetera. Number two, statement review agreed to by council on the purpose of this initiative, addressing the original intent and to present the need for, and the present need for affordable housing. Three, review the final agreements with the CUC prior to execution. Four, a complete thorough business plan, which we haven't seen at all, showing the following. Cost of the project to date from its inception, cost of land from the CUC, plus an updated independent appraisal, funding methodology with options including carrying costs, costs of consultant fees, sales administration, architect's controls, contingencies, et cetera, current cost of infrastructure including deep and shallow services, roads, sidewalks, curbs, lighting, playground, et cetera, lot market value, anticipated profit margin, methodology for construction addressed, administrative expertise and abilities, and effect on the cost on the use of private developers for majority of this project. In summary, we ultimately would not be the only central Alberta municipality to venture into residential land development. Also, this project can be construed as being part of our recently adopted strategic plan. And finally, everything aside, it is absolutely imperative and critical to be fully informed for this decision. Thank you.
Councillor Bousma? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. I would like to ensure that discussion with what's happened with CUC, as I understand, the documents have not been signed formally. Is that correct?
That is correct, councillor Foster. The amending agreement has not been signed.
Okay, so we, from a legal standpoint, I just want to ensure that we keep our discussions with CUC wide open and make sure that everything is according to where we want to go. Thank you.
Councillor Rappel?
I just want to comment on the reasoning for why I feel that at this time we shouldn't move forward. And when this first came to me, when I was on council, it was something that started before I actually got on. And there was a real need for it and I think it was the right move for the town at the time to get into. As it progressed, you know, it was something that a lot of people were excited about in our community and were interested in. And the only thing that ever changed was what happened with the economy. If that wouldn't have happened, I think this would have been a big plus for the city. That did happen. We felt that we still had a legal obligation with CUC. And if I was gonna vote for it at the time, which I did, and give my word that we would do that, I would stand behind that. It sounds like now that with CUC, the agreement still hasn't been signed. I think that, you know, there comes a point where you just have to kind of say, you know, is this going to go or isn't it? And I just feel that my decision is made by pressure of a few small people. My decision is made based on what's best for my community. And seeing as this has gone on so long now and we still haven't come to agreement, my feeling is that now is probably the time to make the decision that we don't move forward. So I don't want people to think that, you know, I'm listening to a small group or, you know, I'm doing what I think is right for all of the citizens of Locom. And I want to make sure that, as Ian said, we keep that communication line between the city and CUC open. And who knows, down the road, maybe something comes up that we can work with them.
Thank you. Councillor Conick?
From the onset, I always had some reservations about this development. However, in the interest of honoring the previous council's agreement with CUC, I think we all had decided that it would be prudent to proceed with at least Phase One. Since those developments with the capital budget that's gone through, it would become apparent that a great deal of money would have to be spent by the city. And I was under the impression that perhaps we could enter an agreement with the developer to lay some of those costs. That apparently is not possible. And ultimately, then, I think in the end, I will support terminating this project as a result. And that's a lot of money to spend. And I'd like to see those spend as well. Thank you.
Councillor Kite?
I have had mixed feelings about this project, even though I have supported it in the past. And I, to this day, love the subdivision layout since it shows innovation, forward-thinking, et cetera, and a creative community that brings something interesting to the city. However, as councillor Rappel already stated, I think the initial intent or the need for the project no longer exists. We are all aware of that. My main concern has always been that we have housing for all, that we have different kinds of housing available for the different income groups in the city of Locom so that everybody could find a home here who wants to live there. When I first moved to Locom in 1999, that was not the case. And it remains so almost to this day. I venture to say that even today, not everybody who wants to live here can afford to live here. And so having said that, I will vote in support of the motion. But I would like to just put this thought forward. When we look at the long-term plan for the city as far as comprehensive housing needs are concerned, I think that we have to look at it from a totally different perspective. Let's say that we form a ten-year housing plan, we have to actually look at what our housing needs are and then who's going to meet those needs. We have developers in town. I can see that then, once we know what our needs, anticipated needs are, we would discuss those needs with those who want to build. If we don't find cooperation to build what we need, then I think it's the city's responsibility to do that. And that's where I stand as far as my opinion. I believe that it was my opinion five years ago. Thank you.
Councillor Bousma and councillor Foster?
I would also be in favor of this particular motion. I believe we, as a governing body in the city of Locom, have the right to expect certain things from our private developers and work in collaboration with them to come and satisfy the housing needs, as Odi had mentioned. And I think that is ultimately, as far as the risk for our taxpayers is concerned, et cetera, is a much palatable option.
Councillor Foster?
Thank you. I guess, thank you, Mayor Christie. I guess to summarize what some of the councillors have said, certainly, it's all been said. The concern that I have is that we are trying to look out there 20, 30 years. And I think we need to be very proactive in what this community needs, as Odi has said. And I don't know, and I guess I have to be shown that we're going to have some collaboration with the development community. Because I think that they've got lots to offer. And I have not seen, in my mind, that process developing the way that it should have over the last number of years. And I really think that this is an opportunity. We've shown that we've done our due diligence on this. We've done five years of discussion. And we've now come to this decision tonight. And so I have very strong feelings about this. And I think that going forward, we need to make sure that we're going to support each other and not be pointing fingers at anyone. Thank you.
Councillor Creasy?
Thanks, Mayor Christie. I don't think it's any secret to the majority of people in this room that I have not been in favor of this project from its inception for a variety of reasons. The biggest one for me is the idea of we, as the city, being a governing body for this type of development and then to be in business on that same venture is just to play the game, make the rules, both just doesn't work. So I'll certainly be supporting this motion. And I'm very hopeful that our development community appears to be fairly well represented here this evening. We'll step up to the plate and talk some creative ideas to address some housing needs that have been identified by councillor Kite and others. So hopefully, we can move on to better times and progress development here in the city like it ought to be.
Any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. New business, stormline alignment options under streets and roads. Mr. Gully?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. The agenda item in front of you is regarding a request that came from the council a few weeks back, I think a couple of weeks before Christmas. The budget is being presented and there's a question about exploring alternative ways to construct a stormline on 45th Street. And name it using a trenchless technology, so more in the line. And so we looked into that option. We talked to our engineering team about that and talked to a few contractors to see who would be able to do the work and what kind of concerns there would be or what kind of cost there would be. We found that basically there's a number of concerns from a constructability point of view. Quite concerned about getting accuracy of depth and alignment would be the main concern. But getting a contractor that can actually do this work and getting the amount of feet of height that we would need is also certainly a concern. Beyond that, the cost is quite a bit higher. You do save some. There is some savings to be had with removing the need for landscape remediation and infrastructure remediation above the surface. But there's a trade-off to that as well in that you don't get a new road. You are lucky to see a little bit you have now, which is in fantastic shape. So we're recommending to go with a traditional excavation, back, bed and backfill method for this project. But certainly, trenchless technology is something that we will consider in the future and are considering on projects that we have now, such as the service lines that we talked about a few weeks back. If there is any questions.
Councillor Bousma?
One question that I have, Matt, is the, how extensive is this project? Like, how much distance are we talking? And then ultimately, what effect is that going to end up having on disruption of traffic flow, you know, accessibility, that sort of thing?
I don't have the distance rate in front of me, but certainly it's in the neighborhood of half a kilometer or something like that. So it is quite extensive. But the project in a traditional excavation method would be done on a block-by-block basis. It wouldn't be done as a, that we go right and rip the whole street open and leave it while we piece around it. So we would minimize disruption as much as we can. There would be some disruption. I guess further to that, though, there would also be some disruption from a trenchless method. You are still digging large pits and you have equipment there and that sort of thing. It'd be less.
Councillor Foster and councillor Conick and councillor Creasy, sir.
Thanks, Mayor Christie. Matt, thank you very much for doing the process, I guess, to find out for sure which way is the most efficient and not maybe the most cost-effective, but the most efficient. My question, and I think it's- My question, and I think it's very obvious that we need to go with the traditional method, if this roadway had been in great condition, would that likely, I mean, going forward, I guess all I'm looking at is, are we going to do this process each and every time to ensure which is the best way to go? Because it seems like the trenchless, there's not many contractors out there. It might be difficult to get them at the right times and that sort of thing. Or should we be looking at that process each and every time?
I'm not sure that, excuse me, I'm not sure that we look at it each and every time. A lot of times when we're redoing, say, sewer or water, such as our Forty-Ninth Downview project this year, we're doing a number of, we're doing sewer and water and maybe storm as well. And so, there wouldn't be any savings to setting up twice and boring it twice. That way, it's definitely worth excavating. But where we are doing, say, a line below, let's say, two-hundred-and-fifty millimeters or something like that, that's a pressured line, I think then trenchless becomes a lot more, a lot more viable option. The main concern with this is both the size of the line, getting a contractor with that type of equipment, and a pipe of that size, and the fact that it's a gravity drain pipe. So, when you get those variations of, even at foot, it is going to make a very, very big difference on the ability of that pipe to drain. Unfortunately, with boring technology, I've seen it's not variation of a foot, it's like ten feet sometimes, that is really, we could not have, wouldn't we? It's amazing from that information in your report that there wouldn't be that kind of variation. Thank you.
Counsel Conick?
Counsel Foster pretty much asked my question. I should probably, Matt. Next time, we'll all agree the same. So, anyway, Jeffy said that I would move that council direct administration to complete design for the Forty-Fifth Street Stormline project using traditional replacement methods. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Christie. So, please, Lieutenant, this wasn't my exercise, just
to give a little work out of you, Matt. I'm genuinely wanting to see the difference. Obviously, it's not economical necessarily. I guess, in order to support this traditional method, as I said, if this is going to make the drainage better, that's fine. If it's going to make a difference, then, sorry, I guess there's just a couple of other questions that I had in regards to that whole scenario there. And one is, we're a hundred percent sure that the existing system was not working. It's been scoped and identified as, you understand what I'm getting at here? I mean, this isn't plugged up, and we're doing this, two and a half million dollars. I just want to be sure that it's being done for the right reasons, not just to meet your reaction to appease one area of town for flooding, that's all.
We have ensured that there is no blockage in that line, and it's also been modeled. And so, we know that even if perfectly working, if everything was working perfect, it still doesn't have the capacity that's needed that this new line is going to provide. There's just not the capacity there to get enough water up fast enough right now, which is causing this to back up.
Okay. And I guess further to that, we did receive substantial damage in that affected area from the floods, from homeowners. I mean...
What, you're asking, sir?
Yeah, I'm asking. I don't know.
Yeah, this new line will go right by probably the worst hit, the worst hit area that we have. We did receive, I think, also block of everybody on the block getting backed up, including our, some of our own staff. So, it is one of the worst-hit areas, and this will definitely directly improve the drainage in that area.
Okay. And I guess the last one would be, with all of these types of design issues and whatnot, that there's some regulations with Alberta Environment, and we're going to substantially alter those ones that would have been made originally for this area. Is that working in line with Alberta Environment, though?
We'll be in, excuse me, we'll be in further discussion with Alberta Environment to make sure that we are adhering to all of their regulations. They are aware that this project is planned right now. The original, the original line was meant at the time to drain the same amount of area as this one is being meant to drain. This is just going to do the job better. So, we're not anticipating any problems. Preliminary discussions with them have not indicated any concerns from their end. It would be a concern if we were draining a new area directly there, but it's draining the exact same area. It's just going to be doing it at a more effective rate.
Okay. And then, so, it's still prudent to go ahead with the pond enlargement or whatever, even with this additional big line out of it? That's still warranted?
The additional volume in the pond is going to be kind of working tandem with this line to make sure that the release rate doesn't go so high that Alberta Environment would be concerned. So, it's going to be able to build up into that pond before it releases a, I guess, erosion-causing level. So, the pond is, has been recommended by our engineers as necessary for this operation.
I appreciate that. I just wanted you're okay, because let's keep in mind engineers who pay a percentage of the projects, and sometimes things get a little carried away. That's what I'm asking. So, that makes it a lot easier to support this project. And thanks for those answers. Cre, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Grant. I just want to say, Matt, thank you for this extra work that you've done. And I want to say that let's never hire that company again, because I have quite extensive experience with boring. We went underneath the Peace River. I was on a project, and they hit a target within each feet. So, with a rather fairly decent large diameter pipe. But yeah, thank you very, very much for this information. And there is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Now, that takes us to you again, Matt, Environmental Health Services and Utilities, Water and Wastewater. Matt?
This is basically a second go-around of the same amendment that you'd seen before. This one just includes the both the bylaw amendment and the policy amendment that was supported by council in a past meeting. These amendments are required to allow for the replacement of service lines in conjunction with the replacement of sewer mains when the trees are known to be or expected to be a problem for homeowners.
Just, thank you, Mayor Christie. Just a question, Matt. If we, I'm confused by my own question. I'm trying to determine whether, if we have, if I'm the homeowner and I have an option, I'm going to have an option here.
To Counsel Foster, the intent with this policy change and bylaw change, Counsel Foster, is that if we're undertaking capital works, so if we're undertaking work to the main, this is the main, or sorry, we can go in and we can replace the service line to the property, to the homeowner's house, now there is no option. So, the intent is that the cost of replacing that service line will be split fifty-fifty between the city and the homeowner. And that's because we know we have root intrusion problems in certain areas, and this gives us the ability to replace those lines that are having problems.
Good. Thank you. Counsel Creasy?
I would expect that we're going to have a few people that are impressed by having the visitor yards, but in order to protect future buyers of homes or whatnot, I don't see any way around having some sort of an opt-in thing. We either have to do it or not. I mean, I guess, in the short run, in favor of this motion? The one I was just about to make.
Counsel Creasy, I just wanted to comment that certainly with our recent rebranding, we've identified LaCome, or certainly, we, which LaCome did become the most beautiful city in Alberta. And our urban forest is a large part of that. So, I don't see the root intrusion problems going away. We want to retain our trees and certainly create that image. So, I do feel that, yes, it's obligatory that the homeowner cooperate with us, the city. However, I do think it's everyone's benefit in the end.
I was going to say, I'd like to make that motion now. Good. Thanks for that information. I would still move that council fund replacement relining of sanitary service lines impacted by root intrusion on a fifty-fifty basis with the homeowner, when in conjunction with capital programs adjacent to the property. That was for a first reading.
Counsel Kite?
When we earlier talked about this night, it was presented, it was not only the matter of getting the lines fixed, but it also had to do with road repair. And when we talk about beautiful cities, I think the roads are an important part of beautiful cities. And the patchwork that we have on some of our roads definitely isn't pretty. So, when we go and dig everything up, and then we patch it all up with nice paving, then we have to go and dig up again. I think that also is an issue that we consider that is an important one.
Any further discussion on that? Because we do have the bylaw as well as the policies, so. All those in favor of the motion on the floor? Thank you. And keep it with what we talked about earlier. We can get second reading for this bylaw, and we can adopt the policy without the bylaw being changed completely as well. So, we'll need a motion to adopt that, to have that policy. Counsel Kite?
I'll move that we adopt the proposed policy amendment by resolution as specific.
Thank you. Further discussion on the policy? All those in favor? Thank you. Counsel Bauschman?
I'll make a motion that we give the bylaw seventy-second reading.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. We will now move down to Land Use Planning and Land Development Part of Town Area Redevelopment Plan. Michael, did you want to start out with this?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. I'll just introduce this, and I'll pass this off to Jennifer. As council is well aware, we've been moving forward with the Part of Town Area Redevelopment Plan tonight. Before you, the next step in that process is the appointment of the advisory committee planner, Jennifer Kircher, is here tonight, and she's going to walk you through the details of this.
Does anybody know, does everybody know Jennifer? Does everybody know Jennifer? Super. Thanks, Jennifer. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Thanks. We had a decent turnout. We had nine applicants. They were fairly diverse, including individuals who just reside in the planned area, an individual who is a commercial property owner, and a few individuals who are both. So, pretty diverse. I'll just go over the nine different applicants that we had. For solely a business owner, we had Dr. Paul West, who is a local dentist. He's worked here for the last five years at the LaCome Dental Clinic, and he's also an active member of the LaCome Rotary Club. Residential property owners and residents, we have Mr. Wayne Hamilton, who is, or Hampton, sorry, and he's a retired principal from the LaCome Upper Elementary School, and he's resided in LaCome for twenty-nine years. Mrs. Bonnie Hopkins, who's lived in LaCome for seventeen years and works by serving the community through providing student transportation. Ms. Colleen Shalane, and she has resided in LaCome for the past thirteen years and works as a librarian and a library consultant. And Mr. Bernard Storps, who has lived in LaCome for thirty-four years and owns several rental properties in the planned area. And then we have four individuals who both reside and operate businesses in the area. Mrs. Candace Campbell, who is the owner and operator of And Everything Nice Antiques and Collectibles, which is located in the traditional downtown commercial core and has resided in LaCome since 2005. Ms. Sis Donahue, who owns the Consignment Warehouse, also located in the downtown commercial core, and she has resided in LaCome since 1991. Ms. Lori Nochin, who is the owner and operator of the Crafty Later Lady, and that's also in the traditional downtown commercial core. She's resided in LaCome for forty years. And Mr. Tyler Nochin, who's the owner of NoCo Home Hardware, and he's resided in LaCome for the past twenty-five years. Initially, we had set in the terms of reference for seven individuals to be appointed, three commercial property owners/business operators, and four resident/ residential property owners. We have a few proposed options, and we are currently recommending that you appoint all nine candidates to serve on the committee and to alter the terms of reference to reflect this. We feel this would be a good way to ensure that, based on everyone's diverse schedules, we'll get a pretty good turnout for each meeting.
Thank you. Counsel?
Counsel Conick? Thank you, Mayor Christie. I know I, from what I'm excited to be on this committee, and I worked and talked with a number of these individuals about issues in the downtown core. And so, I would agree with the minutes and recommendation. I think a couple more bodies would be terrific, and I don't see any problem. And I, I think, I look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Counsel Foster?
So, I will make that motion to alter the terms of reference to include the nine members.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Foster?
I was going to, I, to be very honest, I am extremely happy that we were able to get nine members of the community to come forth and be on this redevelopment plan. It's absolutely fantastic. I thought we would have been three months trying to get seven, and here we are with nine. So, very, very pleased that we have that group.
Thanks, India. I've got a little more faith. That's something that I have always said that sets LaComo Park, is its volunteering spirit for the citizens of LaCome. And once again, they've come through and shown that they're up for the task. So, I'm very, very proud to say that we have nine people there, as I mentioned this morning on the radio as well. It's great to see that the volunteering spirit is still there. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor? All those in favor? So, carry. You now have nine members. Good luck. As Ruben's email said today, getting everybody lined up for the meetings. We're looking forward to sit down in that first meeting with you. Thank you, Jen, for your hard work.
It should be interesting.
You bet. Have a great evening. Counsel Legislative, Inter-City Forum on Social Policy, Inter-City Forum Board Appointment. Brenda?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. Counsel may remember, we've discussed this opportunity a couple of times, informally. Since the city of LaCome has formally become a city, it gains us access to a network group that meets two or three times a year. And the Inter-City Forum is a group that they meet either in the Duke or in Calgary, and the prime purpose is to be a discussion group for issues that each municipality may be facing. And certainly, there's opportunities to share information, or strategies, or resources. And I ultimately believe there's probably some opportunity to do some joint work, I'm thinking of the housing needs assessment and those kinds of things. The discussion is around social issues and social innovations. So, we have been invited to attend that table, and I have attached the terms of reference for council's review. And we are requesting that council identify council members who participate.
Counsel Kite?
I would be very interested in sitting on this board, since I can't nominate myself.
I'll make a motion to appoint Odi Kite, Counsel Kite, to this board. Thank you. Yeah, do I have to do it three? Do I have to call for nominations three times? Any further discussion on this? I didn't think there would be. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Odi. I saw this come through. I think, as Counsel Creasy mentioned, there was six of us thinking of you right away. So, thank you for that, and we know that we will be well represented.
Ambulance, LaCome Municipal Ambulance Service, 2012 Operating Budget. Brenda?
Thank you, Mayor Christie. So, before council tonight is copies of the LaCome Municipal Ambulance Society's operational and capital budgets for 2012. And the requirement of the bylaws for the association are that the... And the requirement of the bylaws for the association are that the principal members, who are identified as county of La Colombe and city of La Colombe, approve each annual budget. This requirement of approval, of course, harkens back to the time when at the municipalities we were actually funding the ambulance services. And so there is a slight shift here in that the funding is coming from Alberta Health Services for the service. But the bylaws, the objects in the bylaws remain. And so we do bring these budgets back to this council for your approval. I have attached the operating and the capital budgets for your review and certainly would be prepared to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Janet. Counselor Kait.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the twenty-twelve of our municipal ambulance services budgets as presented.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Conick.
Thank you, Mayor Christie. Director Vaughn, we had talked about the surplus, the ambulance capital surplus that they had had. Is that reflected in the capital budget, that money, those monies? Or are those monies are still?
The surpluses that the ambulance society has are accounted for in surplus accounts. They are not part of the operating or capital operating budgets. The operating or capital budgets. So they are accounted for separately.
Okay, so that extra, I can't remember how much it was that we talked about that we're going to do with that. That's not, this transfers, that's still sitting someplace else to do.
That's right.
Is this not the transfer from capital reserve that are being spent on ambulances and cardiac monitors?
Those funds are monies that are budgeted in the capital budget and the capital reserve. But we have operational reserves that are resulting from surpluses, operating surpluses that have accrued over prior years.
Thank you for that clarification. Michael.
Just to clarify that this, these budgets only represent the ambulance, provision of ambulance services themselves, not the education component.
Thank you. Do we need a motion for this as well? Oh, you did, Terry. Oh, yes, you did. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion? So Kerry, thank you. Thank you, Brenda. And good luck with the problems that you're dealing with. Great.
Reports. Counselor Creasy, want to hit on the highlights?
Absolutely, there were so many. It's really the only thing that... Kind of odd in January to have so much of the trees, but that was just the way it came into me. So I can take that for what it's worth. The other thing was the retirement of Constable Podolsky, Podolsky, rather. And had an opportunity to have a little chat with him and whatnot. And I think he's probably our longest-serving member on the chief. Leslie's been there a little longer. Okay, second man. So some big changes there. And wish him all the best. And he'll certainly be missed. So that was all that I had to add to my written report.
Thanks, Grant. Any questions for Grant? Thank you. Counselor Conick.
Thank you, Mayor Christie. Again, my report's breathing. I just did want to touch on that meeting a little bit with the library board on the fourteenth. Couple of things that, in fact, transpired, as you can see there. They are going to pay back their debt in full. So that'll make twenty-one thousand do the good for us. And this, of course, all this arrives out of the fact that they didn't get as much as they were hoping for. And of course, they had dealt with their surplus and their issues there and so forth. So this is all that comes out of that. Membership rates will be increasing. Again, that was something that council had spoke about. And so they will be increasing those as well. They are doing a very dramatic HR review that should be done by the summer. And again, there's been some talk of, you know, the wages there, particularly for pages and so forth. But they're going to go to, in all likelihood, they won't see any more pages there. They're going to move them to circulation clerks, which will increase their wages dramatically. Technology review. Again, this has to do with the surplus that they have. I hadn't realized this, none of us had really, but Christina was kind of squirreling money the last few years in the budget for a security system. Nice to know that sooner. But anyway. Apparently, when the library was built, it didn't, it was supposed to have had a security system. And it was shelved for whatever reason. And it's kind of a provincial mandate, but they're supposed to have one because of the assets that are there in terms of the books, I guess. At any rate, the system they're looking at is a seventy-five thousand dollar system. So that'll pretty much take care of their surplus if they decide to spend that this year.
Seventy-five thousand?
Seventy-five thousand. It's a card access, card key system. So that will take care of their surplus pretty much, should that be spent. But again, we're doing a, they're doing technology review and they should have some decisions on that by the end of the spring. Fund development strategy is in full swing and we'll see how that pans out. John Goldenstein is kind of chairing that. He takes off for the next four months for labor plats. But once he comes back, we'll be tackling that again. So needless to say, it was a productive meeting. And there's going to be some changes this year at the library. And their numbers will change, I would say, not dramatically the next year.
Counselor Kait.
Just have a couple of questions about the security system. Is that for access to the library or for exiting when they, is it the radio frequency identification system or something totally different?
My understanding is access and exit. It's both. That's why it's expensive.
Just for staff?
Staff and for, I'm not entirely sure of all the details, but I'm pretty sure it's for staff and staff.
Brenda?
Maybe Brenda knows more. I don't know.
Thinking back to two thousand and seven, which is when I came on board, there was some discussion about purchasing a system that would be housed at the exit to the park, lest we forget park. And then the exit, the main exit, the entrance to the library. And it is to prevent books being carried out of the library without being accounted for. It did have a second capacity in that was that people could do their own checking in and returning and checking the books. So I don't know if that's the same system. But certainly, we could, I could get more information and clarify that for council.
But a couple of years ago, it was fifty thousand dollars just for the initial security system. And so I'm just wondering if they are going forward with that. The second one was, do you know what the differences in job descriptions would be between pages and circulation clerks? How much do their duties increase then?
And again, that's part of the review. But it's been determined already that pages are pretty much doing the work of circulation clerks. That's one of the reasons why this overview is taking place. It's also taking place because there's no contingency plans. Should Christina leaves tomorrow, we don't, there's no real backup plan. There's no backup librarian. There's not, so there's a bunch of things that they're reviewing there. And part of that will be the wage, looking at the wages and so forth.
Counsel Rappel.
The price for the security system just seems awfully high.
A number of us were surprised at that as well. But they, I mean, they want a good system. And they want to be capable of doing a number of different things. I mean, and again, it's not, this is just, part of the technology review will determine what is the best system. And that's all that will take place. But that was a number that was thrown out there. Christina said the system she was looking at was seventy-five thousand. Now, it'll be up to the library board to determine if that's what we're spending on. But again, it's all, that's part of the technology review. But it does need, the library does need a security system.
Well, absolutely. I agree, need a security system and, you know, obviously for staff to get in and out and all that sort of stuff. So I'm hearing that the board is going to look at the recommendations that come in. And hopefully, there's more than one recommendation coming in from the library.
Well, absolutely. And they're not going to be, like they said, they have the surplus. There are other things they want to do with the surplus, not just the security system. And that's all going to get taken into consideration. But you'll, well, I'll give you more, a bigger update by probably the end of the summer. We're going to have that.
Thanks, Ruben. I know you were looking for someone to take your CAPS committee meeting for you as well. And I'm just wondering if anybody's been able to take that. And should we maybe have administration go to that?
Certainly, Mayor Christie, if a counselor is not available, then administration will attend, yes.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. I forgot to mention that if someone could go in by step, that would be terrific. Sorry, it was originally supposed to be the eighteenth. It was changed to the twenty-fifth. I thought I could go in and it turns out I can't. And that's the reason. The twenty-fifth, seven P.M. It's an hour, hour and a half tops. It's basically, you know, those of you who, some of you have been on CAPS, of course, it's a pretty straightforward meeting. But I can't, I can't meet.
If anybody can, just get ahold of Ruben and we'll take that up. And if you can, if nobody can make it, just let them know. Because I don't think you're prepared to have administration at that with regards to what's going on. Counsel Bosma.
Thank you, Mayor Christie. As you can see, I've had to report on a couple of things since I was away during December, which other December. Soon as I got back, we had a police commission meeting. And there will be a couple of things of interest there that I would like to highlight. One being that the provincial fine revenue is down substantially from the budget. And communication so far suggests that, you know, that's obviously not a good thing for us, because that'll create a larger deficit position for the police department. And there's definitely merit to continuing on enforcing the safety on our roads. And that's what's going to end up happening here in two thousand and twelve. The other item is that, I'll just read this quickly, review the initial draft of a community standards bylaw, which will end up being presented to council, addressing graffiti, spitting, urinating, defecation, bullying, panhandling, loitering, et cetera. Discussion also centered on the potential for instigating a curfew for children and youth. This will be going back to the January meeting and with a few revisions that were recommended. And then to legal council for review prior to coming to city council. So you know what's coming up. We've already been forewarned about that. And then I had a great holiday. Thank you.
Any questions for Peter? Counselor Conick.
Yes, thank you. I'm just looking for clarification on the provincial fine revenue. So you're saying that the complete service gets a portion of the pot altogether? Or how is that?
It's a provincial fine if you speed within our, within our community. But it is returned to the city in full. Almost in full, eighty percent. And so with the police department not having issued near as many tickets in two thousand and eleven, as they've had in previous years, our accident rate actually has gone up. And our fine revenue has gone down.
We need a traffic guide, in short. Counselor Rappel and Counselor Kait.
Thank you, Mayor Christie. Speaking of traffic officer, I noticed that we had sheriffs in the city doing ticketing, obviously, for, I don't know if it was being received out, whatever it was. But I noticed them out one day. Do you know often where we just short-staff? I know we do bring them in sometimes to help with, you know, commercial vehicle checks and check stop, you know, that sort of stuff. But I don't seem very often actually handing over what looks like tickets. Do you know what the case was there?
I am not able to comment on that since I was not aware of that situation. But I can comment that we are definitely still short. We should be a full complement of fifteen. And now that John Podolsky has retired, we're down to twelve. So there is, there's a new recruit coming on in February after he's finished his training. And then they're still in the process of hiring others. So we're still without a dedicated traffic officer. And as soon as we get up to full force, then yes, that'll be addressed more, much better.
Counselor Kait.
I wanted to comment on that if we have a, if we have a staff shortage in that police unit. Because I received a phone call between Christmas and New Year's about an incident where a police was called to a household and they needed to apprehend a person and take that person to the hospital. And they could not because they couldn't stay in the, at the hospital with this person. And so they had to call for backup on Black Falls. And I was surprised to find out that we would only have one person on duty over the holidays. It wasn't really over the holidays. It was during the week after Christmas, but still, I was very surprised.
The police collective agreement dictates that there is two staff at all times, twenty-four seven. And there are occasional times, because it is very difficult to do that, being short-staffed, that there'll be two or three hours that will be with only one. So it is a problem.
Thank you. Robert.
To Counsel Kait, certainly the intent is that the vacancies will be filled this year. Now, in terms of police recruiting, it does take some time to bring an individual in. There are a number of tests that they have to undergo. But I do expect that those vacancies will be filled certainly by mid-year.
Counselor Creasy.
I was just curious with fine revenue. When a fine is generated within the jurisdiction of the city, does eighty percent come back regardless of what arm of enforcement rates that take?
Michael.
Yes and no. The only issue, the only time it becomes an issue is where it's written, more than who writes it. So right now, for instance, Highway two A is designated Highway two A, provincial highway. Therefore, the province keeps all of the money. Highway twelve is designated Fiftieth Avenue. So depending if officer writes it as Highway twelve or Fiftieth Avenue, if it's Highway twelve, it goes to the province. If it's Fiftieth Avenue, it's ours. So in short, we may need to have to rename Highway two A once it's ours.
I guess that might be a communication issue with Counselor Bosma, given that information.
No, our officers may be writing something different on Highway two A. But certainly, as sheriffs, our CFP would be writing it as Highway two A. Just a comment with regards to sheriff, our CFP and sheriffs do come through here more. We will see them more often because they are now based out of Black Falls. And so they are like any other police officer. If they see a speeding infraction, and that's primarily what sheriffs rule is, they won't hesitate to write a speeding ticket. So we've all been warned.
Thank you. Counselor Rappel. Your report.
Sorry, I didn't get my reporting on time. But I only had one meeting, Chamber of Commerce, which I knew everybody. And it was the first meeting with the new board. And it looks like there's a great bunch of people there that are just ready to jump on the bandwagon. They divvied out the committees and everybody took something. There was none that were left empty. I think having Kimberu Bay on there is definitely helping out. She's been an asset to that. And a couple of things, obviously, is Farmer's Barnsfield started today. So if you get a chance to hop out there for lunch at the Cardian Club, they would love to see you guys. The trade show is being organized right now. And I have the dates in my report there. So that's something I guess we'll start thinking about soon. Of course, the city usually has a booth in there. So and then they're starting to do working lunches or showcase lunches. They call them a few different things. First one will be in February. I'll get that date out as soon as I have confirmation. And what they're trying to do this year is instead of having it at one place, they're actually going to be moving it from restaurant to restaurant that can't fit a group of people. And they're going to bring in speakers. I believe the first speaker they have is an economist from Service Credit Union. Going to be talking about the state of the economy and what it's going to look like. So should be interesting. And I'll make sure everybody gets a heads up on the date and time of that. Other than that, didn't have a whole lot. But of course, it all starts now. I think I have two or three meetings coming up this week already. And I will be gone from the fifteenth to the twenty-second. For, I'll wait. the fifteenth to the twenty-second for a holiday.
Thank you. Any questions for Counsel Rempel? Odie, Counsel Kite, I was surprised to not see you and I think this is the first time ever since we've gone like.
I was going to say nothing to report, but that's not true because I did have one meeting that he had recorded on, so I thought that would cover it. We just had MPC on the 21st and yeah, short meeting just before Christmas and I did want to thank Wayne for organizing the New Year's Eve party. I didn't attend, I was watching hockey all day and night at home with my daughter in my pajamas, which was just great, but I have heard great comments and so I thought that was great of you to take it on and so thank you so much for doing that. I had some conversations with DeeDee about the trees and thank you, Donna, for a great response to her letter and I wish everybody a happy new year.
Thank you. Any questions for Counsel K? Counsel Foster?
Thanks, Mayor Christie. Just very quickly, yes, the MPC meeting was, while everybody else was holidaying, the three of us from Congress did have a session. Couple of things that I think were very appropriate were some discussions that I had regarding, from the public, on Legacy Point and Wolf Creek Crossing. I guess what it, what it really puts to mind is that what, what we're feeding on is misinformation, not enough information, and I think our communications plan that's coming forth is going to really help us be a lot more proactive because I'm not, not happy with some of the things that are, that are out there in the community that are, that are very incorrect. Lastly, well, aside from John Podolsky, it's great that we're going to recognize him, I guess, just I thought maybe we could put a piece in to recognize his service. Lacombe County Garbage and Recycling Issues. I have had several people come to me and, I mean, I'm out at that recycle place every weekend and I've, this is the first time that I had like four different people come up to me and concerned that people from the county are coming in and dumping garbage in garbage bins, people from the county are coming to our recycle bins. You know, it's an issue and I don't know what the answer is and I don't think any one of us has an answer aside from, you know, putting up sixteen-foot-high fences and having somebody at the gate, but it is, it is an issue and so I just bring it forward that that's been some of the discussion that we've had. Thank you.
Michael?
Just for council's clar, information clarification, the county does contribute to our recycle program, so county residents are permitted to dump recycled materials out of recycle center.
Okay, thank you.
Just so we're clear on that. And yes, it's an ongoing concern with regards to what we call midnight dumping and it's all sorts of commercial garbage showing up in residential bins, residential garbage showing up in town bins behind our buildings here. We know we have county residents dumping. It's a question of catching and we do catch a few. We have residents who don't do phone, do phone enforcement and let us know. But yes, it is, it is a challenge out there. We're seeing more and more of it.
Thank you very much for that on the recycling. Perhaps we could put something in our, in our communication pieces going forward because I certainly would have been very happy to let them know that, but I didn't and so I decided I would bring it back. Thanks, Michael.
Counsel K?
Just a question about that Inter-City Forum group. Where and what time is that?
January 27.
Is that this one? This is the one?
January 27.